So those would be the other things that'll be going on, which is why I'm, there's a lot going on, which is why I'm asking if people can sort of decide if there are particular things they're interested in to work on to help manage the workload. That will not be much between now and August, but will be significant starting then. And part of that workload will be public hearings. Part of what you were provided was the public hearing schedule that occurred 10 years ago. And a timeline in regards to the public hearings, those occurred in October 10 years ago. It would seem that public hearings before the data release don't make much sense. And it would appear to me that public hearings immediately after the data release probably don't make much sense. So October was a month that was selected approximately 10 years ago. So you were aware of the process and I'd like committee input on this. I don't. The process last year was the public hearings occurred in the county. And not all committee members attended them. What generally happened was there was someone designated to chair the public hearing in the county and two other, at least two other members of the committee attended. So there were three committee members present at public hearings, if not more.
I'm thinking it was five, but maybe I just attended once where there were five.
I, I went through the minutes and maybe it was five. I don't recall. So.
My, my other recollection was that a lot of those were simply listening to people talk about what they wanted in a district. And we did not have the data at that point. And I know that people felt that that was particularly unhelpful, both from our point of view and from their point of view.
Actually, that's sort of interesting because I read all the minutes from the public hearing and I didn't actually see that comment. It invite maybe a reference somewhat to one. And, you know, the data will be available and there are programs out there that you can get that I'm sure people will be getting to put the data in to have specific suggestions during public hearings, but public hearings are public hearings. So in the first instance, it would seem to me that the process of having a public hearing in the county probably makes sense. Representative Smith?
Thank, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I wonder if some of the confusion that has come up in the past is the public thinking that those hearings will provide an opportunity for them to know what we plan to do and react to that as if there were a bill that they're reacting to, rather than they're initiating comments to help educate us about what they would like. And and, you know, that's a significant difference. And in point of how we communicate what our goals are for those hearings, we might help.
I've just been notified that sound is on. So apparently if you are listening to the meeting, which I'm assuming is live streaming, if it has been live streaming at all, it has been live streaming without audio. We had some technical difficulties here at the meeting. This was noticed as a work session, so we were able to proceed with our discussion here. And if you're listening, welcome to our meeting. This is the House Special Committee on Redistricting. It is June 29th and our apologies for the delay. I can assure you that the IT department here at the State House was in this room earlier this morning, making sure everything worked. And of course it did not when we went to start the meeting. So thank you for your patience if you're joining us now. Senator Smith, sorry for that interruption.
No, I'm, I'm delighted to hear that, but there will be minutes lengthy of this meeting. So that people who are interested.
But there will be minutes of the general discussion that occurred. There will not be transcriptions of minutes for these meetings.
Right. Thank you.
Representative McGuire?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to suggest that at public hearings, we ought to have one or maybe two maps that are at least close to, as suggestions, because most people won't be able to give you coherent comments without something to look at. If you have, say, these, you know, these two maps, they both are, are close. They're not final. But tell us what the problems or the good points are. We'd be able to get much more useful feedback.
And one would hope with the technology that we have, since the program has already been developed, that once we get the numbers in, we can do that initial, as Representative Smith said, sort of this is where we would be as the maps are today and highlight the districts that no longer work. And maybe that might be a good starting place because we all can understand what our current district is pretty easily.
The other thing is that in, in many cases, you have a part of a county where you have two choices. I mean, I live in one and there, there's a town that's less than one rep, so it has to be joined. And it could be joined with either of two towns, which would give you a different pattern. But there's pluses and minuses to both plans. And so we, it would be useful to give the public the choice, or at least the information to say, we have these two plans. Do you prefer the one with the larger flotarial or the, or the smaller flotarial, which is, boy, I decided the way to go. But it's, that's the sort of thing people can look at and understand a lot better than just general comments.
Thank you. Representative Weber?
Thank you. I was wondering also, having looked in the very initial stages of Mr. Anderson's program last time around before it vanished and we were not allowed to look at it anymore. It was a wonderfully user-friendly program. And I am wondering, once the actual census data gets put into the program, and before that it's not useful at all. I'm wondering if a version of that might be made available to the public through our website so that public members can play around with it, just as, just as folks here could.
Thank you, Representative Weber. That issue has come up in discussions, just so you know. But the discussions on that need to continue. There are copyright issues in regards to the program. There are issues in regards to making that kind of programming available to people and how it is controlled and whether or not the program itself could be altered if it was on a different platform, which would make the apparent generation of results not consistent with the underlying mathematical formula that the program, the original program had. So we have a number of issues that we're discussing to try and work things out. I am aware that there was all access for committee members to the program for some, for a brief time or some time.
Very brief. It was a very brief time and then, and then there was no further access. But it seems to me that my recollection was that at the time the copyright belonged to the House and therefore it would be up to the House as to how and under what circumstances it was made available. And you certainly don't have to have the public tied in with the official version that's being used for the official maps. But it might be something that would be very helpful for people to be able to get a feel for the kinds of issues we're dealing with because for many people, it's, it's easy to say, gee, you know, I want my town and the town next to be together for good and sufficient reasons. But it is not instantly apparent to them that two towns over where Representative McGuire lives, there's an issue where there's a town that has to be attached to one of two towns and there are no other possibilities. So, you know, being able to get that feel might be helpful for the public. So I, I just would urge those discussions go on with an eye to providing the maximum access possible. Thanks.
Representative Smith?
My turn. Thank you, Madam Chair. So it's software, so copyright doesn't matter. What we're talking about is the license agreement. So for example, you can own a copy of software and still not be allowed to modify it. You can own a copy of software and not be allowed to distribute it. So those are the things that we're going to negotiate in the license agreement. And it would be irresponsible of me to say with the outcome of that will be, the intent though is you, you all get it, as many people as possible get it. One of the considerations is how would the public get it? If we put it on the general court website, which isn't always state of the art, what happens if 20,000 people log in today and try to download software? So I don't know if that will be possible. Maybe there's some other way to distribute it, but that is our intent and, and what we're working on. I also think we should point out that we're having a lot of discussions about when things will happen. The one thing that's for sure, you mentioned working backwards from a deadline. That date is November 18th. That's when we will complete our work. So I kind of want that in everyone's minds without, without a suspension of the rules. The deadline for all committees to report retained bills, which these are, is November 18th.
So keeping that in mind and working backwards, the public hearing schedule needs to be before November, after data, when there's some information available. So it really will sort of limit it probably to the end of September, October. So just keep that in mind. And data release is mid-August. Representative Lee?
Thank you. Despite our experience today with live streaming and Zoom, I guess I would like to explore having the county meetings accessible by Zoom or whatever, because we have the technology. It doesn't always work perfectly, but we have that technology. And I think it would give more people the opportunity to participate. And at least, and even if we can't make it interactive, at least they can view it live stream and get a better sense. And I think the more transparency we have, it's hard for people to get to meetings. So anyway, that's what I would ask that we consider.
Thank you. That, that is being considered, but the issue is also being considered as to whether or not you can even provide those things in a consistent manner for, from county to county, given the the technology necessary to do it. And do you have public hearings that provide a different platform in one county to another? There are lots of issues, but we appreciate that there has been electronic access in the past. The other issue, there's a difference obviously between live streaming and any interaction. And I appreciate the, the clarification on your part as to at least having it available to, to look at being, as compared to participation. Representative Smith?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I know the goal is.
I know the goal is November 18th. And I also know that sometimes in the fullness of time, it is not possible to act responsibly, carefully, thoroughly, and follow a particular time deadline. And, uh, I would hope that as we have done on many occasions for bills less significant than these, that the deadline might be extended somewhat. But still early enough for us to be able to meet all the other responsibilities.
Thank you. As you're aware from my previous comments, the ability to waive the deadlines as, as to a request has already been discussed. I always do better when there's a hard deadline though, and I think that November 18th makes the most sense. Because at a certain point, once the data's out, decisions have to be made and to, we'll, we'll see where it goes. But I think keeping November 18th as a goal is, is not a bad one though. I know certainly that the committee 10 years ago was meeting, I believe, the last two weeks in December. So Representative.
I guess I'm just a little bit confused. I, I thought that we were not likely to get the, the numbers from the cities until March or something like that. And so how are we gonna, what?
What could possibly lead you to be confused with that?
How are we, how are we finishing the work in November if we don't have those?
I understand that you don't see clearly how we're going to get all this done. Yeah, part of the problem. Representative Will?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, it seems like there's some consensus here that having public hearings in each county makes sense, that we should be really committed to that. Seems like there's some questions on whether or not we'll be able to provide public access via Zoom or allow people to testify remotely.
I don't know that there's a lot of confusion about that. I don't expect that's probably going to happen.
Okay. I'm wondering if similar to the state budget and, and testifying on the state budget, if we might be able to provide one or two evenings where the public can zoom in to provide their perspective on how these maps are going to be drawn.
Um, I don't anticipate that. We can certainly discuss it, but that would need to be approved by the Speaker's office in regards to the process. And I will tell you that while I appreciate public comment and we want as much public participation as possible, having run some fairly large hearings, both electronically and in person, I have concerns about being able to allocate the appropriate time to New Hampshire residents in regards to their concerns and the ability to monitor that on an electronic platform. I think we've seen massive interest in this, much different than 10 years ago. And I think for the committee, our timeline and the work, we need to figure out what the best way is to provide our representatives and the House, the input of the people we represent. So that's a concern.
Just to follow up, thanks for taking my question. I'm, I'm wondering if we can explore ways to limit public participation to New Hampshire residents? Because I agree with you. I share that concern.
I, that would be impossible because anybody could say they lived anywhere. And it's really easy to do. I mean, that's just the reality. And I'd like to think that people wouldn't do that, but I need to tell you that there might be other people in this room that have some experience with the fact that people would do that. And I, I meant that not for my profession, not from being a legislator. I meant that from being a lawyer. So Representative Smith?
Thanks. I, I think we're skipping a step. And it's kind of funny because this is the context the conversation's happening in. Remember, there is one representative for roughly every 3,300 people in the state. I would hope that whether they're on the committee or not, all members of the House would be talking to their constituents about it. And they have a direct line to this committee, right? Because your colleagues will contact you and say, look, here's what a majority of my constituents said. I feel like what, when we have this, there's, how many of us are there? 15. 15. And we're trying to prioritize how to get the whole state to talk to these 15 people. That, that's not what the New Hampshire House is about. I plan on holding meetings in a couple of my towns, so they're easy to get to, to talk to people about this. You know, and the question is, what's not working for you and what is? And I will bring that information back to the committee. And I think that if we all did that, people wouldn't have to go very far to go to a meeting. And they have access to us right now. They can email us. There's a phone number that they can call. The contents of those phone calls will be logged and documented. I, I think we're pretty accessible. So if, if people aren't thinking that a lot of the work is not going to happen in this room, that we're all going to log a lot of miles talking to people, that maybe that's what we ought to get our heads around.
All right.
I didn't mean that to sound scolding as it came out. I'm hearing my tone and my voice and I apologize for that.
That's, that's all right. And I, you know, I need to clarify Representative Smith's comments on the phone call. There will be access online. I am not, I, I'm not sure that's accurate. Representative Weber?
I just wanted to clarify that same point because if somebody is thinking that phone calls made to my house are, are logged and documented in any kind of way that's available to the public, other than the envelope that I scribbled the note on while I was cooking dinner and threw into a file somewhere, our, our process is, is a little more informal than almost anywhere else in the world.
Thank you. Representative McGuire?
I was thinking of what Representative Smith said, and I know that I have at least one old home day to present to my constituent. And I wonder if it would be possible to get county level maps so that we can draw the lines and show people what the issues are?
Um, I would think counties would have that. Um, we can check on that though for you.
Does that mean like the one on the, on the state website that just shows the outlines of the towns?
All right. If you want to email those kind of requests into me and then I can copy staff and we can see what we can get to. I saw another hand somewhere. Pardon me? That, that's all right. We'll take that. You, you could have just said, oh, your, your question's been answered. I would have felt great that we took care of something. Representative Weber?
As, as a follow-up to Representative McGuire's suggestion, I think having House level maps that show the current districts and the current floterial districts available would be very helpful.
There is such a map. I've got one that, but it's, but, but the county is all you really need for Old Home Day.
Well, I, I think the issue is we'll work on putting a link to those maps on the website. And then people can go to them. And if you're holding an event, you can then log onto it right then and there. And that might eliminate the issue of having to get back to people in regards to specific events. And that's part of the reason why we have Pam sitting here. So she can help me remember to get those requests into IT to link to the website.
Except that we need, need to have something like a PDF because I know my old home days don't have anything like internet connectivity.
Okay. All right. So we're going to need printouts. All right. The last two remaining things. The first is future scheduling. Given the current status, I don't know that it makes sense for us to have a meeting before August. And I want your feedback on that. I'm going to be working with Representative Bergeron. And I'm, as I said, hopefully a couple of others of you in regards to the city processes. So we know exactly where they are and maybe getting that nailed down before the data comes out in August. There will be meetings that will occur with the Senate in regards to nailing down the process. So I am thinking that August probably is when it makes sense to meet again. And then the question will become whether we meet before the 16th or afterwards. And it might make sense to meet before the 16th because by then the details of how things are going to occur, like you've asked us to, hopefully we'll have nailed down. And in the meantime, if you can send emails to myself, we can try to get responses out. I, I want to know whether any committee member thinks that there would be a meeting in July as compared to August. And that way you can all plan for no meetings in concert in July. Representative?
Madam Chair, do you have a sense of the frequency of our meetings in August? I'm just wondering if we might be able to develop some sort of a calendar for the month of August.
I understand that I've been asked to do a calendar. Representative Turkott didn't have enough time to adjust his schedule. We'll try to figure that out, but frankly, I don't really know how we're going to be using the program yet. So until I get that figured out, I, I mean, we don't want to meet and not have anything. And I need to figure out some communication for whether or not we're going to have a, a group, a, a work session in regards to the electronics of the map and how we're going to do that. The county meetings are going to be, you know, time for people and I'm mindful of that. So I am going to try and do a schedule for meetings, but at this point, I don't know exactly how much the meeting, how often we'll be meeting because that's somewhat dependent on the division with the Senate. Representative Weber?
I'm having a hard time understanding the utility of having a meeting before the data comes out. It would seem to me that it would be much more useful to have a meeting subsequent to the data coming out later in August.
Well, it, see, the reason I, I say before August is that I'm hoping by then people will have some feedback from constituents or old home days. So that when we come back for a meeting in August, I don't want to be having a meeting in August with the data out without having maps. And I don't want to do maps unless we've had some input into what the committee expects to see. Because, so I don't, maybe we have two meetings then. And I viewed the meeting before the data release as being a preamble to what you wanted to see after the data was released. We can meet after August. If the committee consensus is what we want to see is, as Representative Smith said, the map with the current districts with the deviation calculations as they would exist if the district stayed exactly the same, to give us a base point for going forward. That would be the map that you would see.
If I may follow up?
Yeah.
I, I'm still unclear of the purpose of a meeting before the data is out. Because it seems to me that then all we have is anecdotal information of I spoke to somebody at a town hall meeting and they're concerned about this or that. But we can do that just as easily after the data's come out. And, and having the preferences without the data available seems to me that we're putting a lot of work in, in a direction that we may not be able to go in because the numbers aren't there to do it that way.
Okay. Thank you for your input. We'll make a decision. Representative Smith?
Resident monkey wrench thrower, there might be value for one meeting. We nail down the software, get the user license worked out and agree this is what we're going to do to have a training session.
Without the data in there.
Representative Weber, attendance will not be required if we decide to have a meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, we can use the old data to learn how to use the software.
That's what I had talked about in regards to getting a map so we see where the deviations are. Because I don't know if any of you have had the same experience I've had. I've had another number of reps come up to me and say, don't change my district. And that you will find when you do a lot of your research on district drawing, is what you find is what drives a lot of what ends up being the product is people who are in there keeping things the same for them. So, uh, that's been sort of entertaining for me to see who's come up. Has anybody else had that happen? Yeah.
I've had someone say, please change.
All right. I have one more thing I'd like to do before we end this meeting. Does anybody else have any other business? All right. Um, Pam, could you come up here for a sec, please? Come on up. For those of you who don't know this woman that I'm asking to come up here, her name is Pam Smarlet. She has been the roots of the tree that are all things election for how long?
32 years.
32 years. So when we talk about having somebody 10 years ago, 20 years ago, when you're the chair of a committee or a process, this is the woman that really is the person to whom you're looking. I'm taking it a little personally that she's retiring during my term as Chair of Election Law and Chair of the Redistricting Commission. And I will note that we referred to Joel, who actually used to be in the same office and he retired last year. So this is clearly a conspiracy on staff in regards to all things election. Because I suspect we're going to be contracting them both for services over the next year. I think the truth of the matter is, is with COVID, you will note that the fourth floor has been blocked to access for legislators and staff. And Joel and Pam shared the office that was right by the staircase where all the legislators were going up and down all day long like bunnies, hopping up and down and asking questions. They were the first line that people got. And I think after a year of not having us up there, she bonded out. Because I heard they're going to let the elevator go to the fourth floor soon. So, um, I had a chance to speak to David Cody, a former chair of the Election Law Committee. And I know this is not the election law, but has been involved in election and redistricting things. And also to Representative Hozel from Raymond, who is a, a prior chair. And they, along with myself, wish you the best in your retirement. You have been a support like none other for this committee. And I will tell you, among chairs, we all say we have the best committee researcher and assistant. But for election law, it was really true. We, we did have the best. So I have these flowers for you. I contacted Anne to, to try to find out what you were going to do with yourself in your retirement. And, and I suspect it's just go far, far away. So, um, I have this for you along with a card. You only have a desk for another 24 hours. So use it and thank you very much.
Well, I'm glad we got the sound up for this. Just in time for the important part of it. Thank you so much for, for the recognition. Don't take it personally, please.
Do you have any special plans or you? I'm really trying to find out if she's going to be around the next few months.
Travel is in the future, but no, no near specific plans other than in July. So we'll see.
Well, enjoy it. You certainly earned it and thank you again.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Does anybody have any other business to come before the committee this morning? I'm not seeing any. So thank you very much. Representative Will?
I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity for public comment today or?
It's a work session. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a nice July.
You too.